Call of media, North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. George Snyder, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Gerald Bush, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jean Hogan, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Beverly Bacon, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kathleen Rinella Oliver, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Eleanor Ely, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Joseph Scotch, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Absolutely, Mr.
It's very difficult each time when we have a moment of silence, but I'd like to speak about four people. Gerald Bush was a bus driver, transportation for our school district. And he, Matt would tell you, I don't know if Matt was here then, but he trained our bus drivers, put them through the test, which I saw the other day. More importantly, he had a handicapped student at the junior high who was bound to a wheelchair and the young man passed away when he was in junior high. But Gerald forwarded scholarship, a Dallas for scholarship, which we finally gave away. So I remember him. Jean Hogan, smile on her face. She was a nurse at Gillette. She was close friends with a good friend of mine and she worked hard as a nurse, helped the students of Gillette Road Middle School. Kathy Oliver was a teacher in the Fayetteville Manly, a math teacher in Fayetteville Manly, a school district for over thirty years. She was married to Dave Oliver, who was a teacher at the junior high, but she was so wonderful. She too had a wonderful smile on her face and she helped volunteer at Meals and Wheels with me. And finally, the last one. Eleanor Ely, ninety-six years old, was my first librarian. I tell Chris this all the time and I tell Dan Bowles that that was our library down there and she was my first librarian. God bless Eleanor Ely and I'll never forget her because she, at that time, we called them librarians. We didn't call them library specialists or media specialists, but she inspired my students to read. So these are four people that I remember that inspired us to be this kind of school district we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Okay, next we have a proclamation. This is for Office Personnel Appreciation Day. Throughout history, office personnel has had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive and patient. The office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. They've dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators and community members recognize, applaud and appreciate their efforts to ensure that students receive a quality education. To honor the office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts, on behalf of the community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two as Office Personnel Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. If I could get a second for that motion, a sec from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? All in favor? Post that is carried. Thank you very much. We'll just present these. Thank you.
On behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District and the Board of Education, we'd like to give you this proclamation for Office Personnel Appreciation Day. And I have Team Marie from Office Personnel representing all of the entire unit. I don't know, would you like to say a few words? Well, let's give her a round of applause.
Okay, next we have a presentation. It's on restorative practices. So as soon as that's ready, I'm going to turn it over to you folks. Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, there we go. Thank you so much for giving us some time to speak with you tonight about restorative practice. We're very excited. So who's here tonight? For our restorative practice specialist, this is Jordan Brienzey. She's a restorative practice specialist at Rox Middle. In front of her is Natalie Walters. She's a restorative practice specialist at Rox L. In front of me is Amanda Pollard, the family engagement specialist at Rox Middle. And next to her is Jessica Navawanek, the family engagement specialist from Rox L. This quote from Brené Brown really frames why we are engaged in restorative practice. The idea of connection and the idea that we are hardwired to connect is part of the explanation that over the last two years, we have all undergone a collective trauma as a result of COVID-19. We're not built to be separated. We're not built to be isolated. And as evidenced by our coming together and being together, we've seen that there has been an improvement in the mental health of our students. Restorative practices come under the umbrella of trauma-informed practices that through creation of a safe environment, connected relationships and working to safeguard and support emotional regulation for students, teaching and learning happens in an optimal way. So I'm going to turn it over to Jordan.
Thanks, Lisa. Restorative practices is the science of relationships in community. It's really the foundation of restorative practices, building healthy and positive relationships in order to create a lasting relationship between the community and all the stakeholders. It also is a, restorative practices is built in managing conflict through restorative circles and through conflict mediation. We resolve disputes in a healthy and productive manner and we're really working the entire time to build community through everybody involved, parents, staff and students. Restorative practice really looks at what consequence is. It moves from a traditional punitive approach to consequence, really to more of a restorative approach. A restorative approach really takes into account the offense that happened and a consequence that directly relates to that offense and repairs the harm that has caused. So rather than just a suspension or, you know, stay at home, stay in the ISS room, we're saying what happened to cause harm to others and what can we say is a consequence that would repair that harm and make the other parties involved feel as though there has been some justification or moving forward in that relationship and repairing what had happened. So restorative practice is not without consequence. It's just making sure that consequences follow directly related to what has occurred. This is the social capital window. It's one of the foundations of restorative practice. If you're looking at this continuum, the top right corner is the doing with, the purple box, and that's where we're shooting for, for the most part, for all of our interactions to be. I mean, you're looking at the axes. We've got high control or accountability on the left and on the bottom we have high support. So what we're trying to do is have high expectations for our students, but also support them in doing that along the way. So we're trying to stay out of the punitive, the neglectful, the permissive and really work with our students to support them to get to the high standards that we're setting for them. Proactive circles take place with restorative practice frequently. We're really trying to push proactive relationship building in order for us to avoid the repairing of harm later on. So we're using circles to create relationship building, to talk about emotions, to build connections within the building, for students to understand each other and provide humanity between each other. And we're engaging in those circles throughout the different buildings that we are in and throughout the classrooms and different settings in the buildings that we're in. Once harm has been caused, we're using restorative conferencing in order to repair that harm. Questions that we often use are related to around what happened, who was affected, how did they feel about what had happened and what we need to do to make it right? We typically avoid using the question why. Oftentimes, our students don't know why that they have done something that's happened and it's a very difficult thing for them to pinpoint. So we're really trying to get to what happened, who was affected and how you can make it right. And I will pass it to Jessica.
So restorative practices are happening campus-wide at Roxborough Road and they are extending into the community through home visits and community partnerships and collaborations. At Roxborough Road Middle School, they have a schedule that allows for all fifth and sixth grade students to receive a restorative practice class once per cycle or every four days. They have a beautiful classroom with flexible seating. And the students learn how to participate in proactive circle and share their thoughts and feelings in a safe way with one another to build community. And this also spills into the hallways there. Roxborough Elementary has more of a push-in type model where the restorative practice circles are happening inside of the classrooms. So each teacher is leading restorative circles within the classrooms with the students and building the community there. And that also spills out into the hallways and into the cafeteria. As you can see, Mr. Matala's office where they're clearly smiling and having fun after a restorative time together where we're finding that after a restorative interaction, the relationships are clearly growing. Whereas in the past, a punitive would do harm to the relationship. And then you can see in the cafeteria, a young man comforting another classmate, which shows growing compassion and emotional intelligence. We're also extending into the community and we're working with families. And everything that we're doing with students, we're also doing with families and other staff and other community stakeholders. We're using a restorative approach with caregivers when we're going into the home and it's a collaborative approach that invites the parent to trust us as a partner. We want all students to have a safe, trusted adult in the building and we want all parents to have to know that they have a safe adult in the building also. We know that when parents flourish, their children do also. Our approach is inclusive, collaborative and understanding. And we may be fixing harm that parents have experienced in the past also. Once that trust is established and we're invited into the home, we can bring basic needs such as food or clothing through our food pantry or clothing closets. But one of the biggest needs that we're finding is the emotional support that families are needing. And we're handling that on a daily basis, which is vital to the success of our families. These are the four levels of family engagement in schools based on the work of Karen Map and Anne Anderson, authors of Beyond the Big Sale, The Essential Guide to Family School Partnerships. Karen Map is a senior lecturer on education at the Harvard Graduate School of Education in the faculty direction of the Education Policy and Management Master's Program. And so it makes sense during a COVID time to have a fortress school where there are walls built and parents are not invited in. And then as we opened to, on our terms, call parents into the school. And now we're looking at more of an open door type of school, but we want to build a partnership school where parents are an equal partner and relationships are mutual and we are making decisions together.
So how does this happen and when does this happen? The beauty of restorative practice is that it can be done anywhere with anyone. In fact, most people in this room have probably engaged in restorative practice at some point during the day-to-day without maybe knowing what they were doing. When it comes to our students, in addition to what my team members have already identified, we are proactive with students at all times. There's proactive engagement around restorative conversations. We engage in restorative conversations and some instances around peer struggles. We support school initiatives, including Positivity Project, Be Kind Campaign, Math Night, Rock Stars, which is an after-school club, Chocolawalk and Chain Reaction. And we facilitate listening circles with staff administrators and our students in order to actually hear the student voice and experience. With our faculty, professional development is taking place at all staff meetings led by our restorative specialists. There's representation by restorative practice specialists at district committees. We have collaboration with our counseling teams and building staff as well as administration. And we've also facilitated listening circles to support professional peer engagement and cohesion within our buildings. When it comes to our families, what our students experience is what we try to offer to our families so that there's common language with regards to restorative practice at home as well as in school. We facilitated listening circles with staff and administration with our families after hours at times that work for them with a focus on hearing the family voice and family experience. We're engaging and advocating for our community connections and supports wherever families feel that that is a need and meeting with families where they're at to develop collaborative partnerships and support our student success. We've made the following commitments, as you have heard throughout the presentation. And in addition to this, we're committed to the systemic implementation of restorative practice, moving forward to develop stronger relationships with students, families and buildings across our district.
Thanks, Amanda. So the why. Well, I think we all know that after COVID-19, we cannot go back and do things the way that we've always done. It's an incredible challenge that we have now. And it faces all of public education at this point, doesn't it? We know that we have a chance right now to really do something incredible. And I'd like to take you on a little journey, a short one. We are the North Stars. We're the guiding light. We are looked to in this community and beyond, in this state and what we are now finding in this country as we have all participated in incredible professional developments to help prepare us in our roles. And I have to tell you something, we have an opportunity right now to do something truly transforming. Because if we are not going to unite, if we are not going to find ourselves together in this circle of life, in this circle of community and see what it is that we can truly do together and forge this path, this incredible opportunity that is sealed in love and kindness and generosity and empathy, then we sell ourselves short of the greatness that awaits us. It's our time. It's a North Star rising. And we hope you will become impassioned to believe our why every single day. And with that, I leave you one more entity. We hope you see the goodness that we've done this year.
I am Natalie Walters. I am the restorative practice specialist at Rox L.
I'm Jordan Brienzey, the restorative practices specialist at Roxborough Road Middle School.
I am Jessica Navawanek and I am the family engagement specialist at Roxborough Road Elementary.
I'm Amanda Pollard. I am the family engagement specialist at Roxborough Road Middle School.
From how to fix your credit to buy a home, to how to reach out for support to access winter clothing for your child, to how to build a resume and apply for a job, we actively dedicate our time and energy to supporting our Roxborough families through building collaborations with local agencies that provide resources and opportunities.
It's taken a lot of groundwork this year. We've done that with establishing what circles are, what listening circles are, what those relationships look like, asking students to trust a process that they help create, they help design the norms and the expectations of relationships in those groups.
Students start to care then about the well-being of each other and of the peers around them.
Cultivating those relationships is a necessary step for us so that we can continue to create the climate within our buildings where students feel comfortable, where students feel invited and we know the data shows that students learn best in environments that are supportive and nurturing.
Talk about your feelings and you can talk about stuff that you don't really want to talk about in front of a lot of people and you can talk to people that you trust and stuff.
It helps me like express myself. It is really helpful for me to express how I feel about stuff and.
Our goals can be measured by the subtle nuances we see in behaviors and emotions and the esteem we see within our buildings between students, staff and parents.
I use restorative practices in my classroom during circle time. When students have conflict, we provide them with I messages to explain how they're feeling and how they can restore the relationship that has been broken.
When students start to share, teachers can hear where exactly their classrooms are and the students' well-being and emotional regulation. And teachers feel empowered to elevate the expectations of their classroom community as well as deliver content that is absorbed with an empowerment of high-level learning.
I am restorative.
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 Finally, we introduce to you our logo. This is what we'd like to brand all of our future endeavors, whether it be our professional developments, our community engagements. I also invite you all to let me know if you'd like to be part of our next I Am Restorative reel. We'd love to have you all a part of that. On behalf of the team, I thank you all so much and we are open to any comments and questions at that time. I'll turn it back over to Lisa.
Questions? I'm speechless right now. I had a lot of comments, but I take them for what they're worth. I'm just curious and so I, all this stuff runs through my mind. That was powerful, by the way, the way you ended that. So would you, could you go to Washington and do this? Obviously, that's what you were alluding to. So I would love you to, please. Because, no, but it's, I mean, isn't that what's needed? Can't you just operate as civil human beings and compromise or at least have a discussion? So. Yeah, I just don't, I'm not a positive. I don't feel positive about it right now. We got to get deeper and lower first. I'm sorry, everybody, that I'm having this conversation. But so you're a restorative practice specialist. Somebody here is a family engagement specialist. I probably should know the answer. What were you before those titles existed? Anybody? Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just very curious, like, how do you become that and? Okay.
Amanda and I were both social workers. I was the music teacher.
Oh, awesome. It's just, you mentioned consequences to repair the harm because there are consequences, but they're not like, because I used to be a teacher and in fact, we started to move into this. I think they called it restorative justice. Is that the same thing? They use that term and it was a hard sell. So I guess that's what I want to ask you. And I just, first I want an example, like, can you give me a simple example of a consequence to repair? And how do you make sure the other parties, the armed party is satisfied? I'm just really interested in that.
I can, thank you. I can tell you, we had our first restorative justice circle this fall at Rox L. And in fact, I think one of my colleagues is back here that participated in that. We, unfortunately, there was some vandalism done on the playground where a sign was harmed. And the student took responsibility and there was also the consequence with the code of conduct. But upon coming back, we had a session with the mother and with several of our faculty members as well as Mr. Matala and the student. And the student got to hear the impact of what that damage had caused other people. And I think Dr. Farrar will agree with me. It was incredibly powerful moment, one that we didn't expect. The mother shared with us some incredible personal experience and it let that child understand, wow, I really, really messed up. And one of the things they offered was to help beautify the rest of the school. And so we had these beautiful pink tulips that the family donated and put as part of their way to repair harm as well as that young man went around and contacted people like Dr. Farrar and people who knew who the teacher that that playground was, you know, named after and dearly loved. And they were able to thank him for, you know, that opportunity to meet with them and tell them their story about her. So there was a lot of goodness that came out of that in a time when I think, when it first happened, we were all very puzzled. Why would something like this happen?
Mr. Farfali, just to piggyback, I think what happened was the student really was able to hear the impact on the staff with that playground and the value that it had because of the passing of that person and how the playground was dedicated and the importance. And once they realized the harm, that's what sunk in and then there was the restoration of that and the repair and what the child was going to do to help make it right.
That's a great example. I assume a lot of the, there's a lot of smaller examples when it's interactions between two students, which I know what I experienced and again, then I retired and I don't know where it stands now where I was, but staff buy-in was, was a heavy, heavy lift. It was because, well, you just keep sending them back into the classroom after this happened. So how are you meeting those challenges or don't you really have? Tell me you don't have them. That'd be great.
Wish I could say we don't have them, but I would say that.
I could see a roll of an eye all the way in the back, by the way.
I will, I'll speak from my experience. I think that a lot of staff thought it was a kumbaya thing. Like, oh, it's like a get off scot-free kind of thing. And we kind of, I think, over time and building trust and showing some of that follow-through. And I think a lot of the follow-up conversations with staff that happened after that harm has been caused and the conversation between staff and students is different. The staff gets to hear from the student, the student gets to hear from the staff and just that listening to understand, like, I was affected by this. I'm a human being too as a staff member and letting them voice to the students when harm has been caused to them has been, I think, really impactful. And it actually, I've seen relationships blossom just by opening the door for a conversation about what has happened or occurred versus it just being like, you leave and you come back to my classroom. That, I think, is the most powerful, powerful part of it.
I thank you and I won't take any more time just to say that I admire your, what you're doing. I support it a hundred and. I thank you and I, I won't take any more time just to say that I admire your, what you're doing. I support it 100. Hundred percent. I won't go beyond 100 because that's not realistic, but I know it requires perseverance. But I know it will work if you can persevere, but it's so easy to give up and just go back. So thank you for this presentation. Yes, Mr. Craftery.
I do have one question that I have a comment is, so in the Roxboro campus, have all the teachers been trained in this practice? So it's in both campuses. So our classroom teachers, music teachers, phys ed teachers have been administrators in the building.
So, so the first sort of round of training happened last summer and about half of the staff in both buildings were trained. We are planning to continue that training this summer. So by summer's end, we will have all of the staff on both campuses trained. And we're hoping to train our district steering committee as well as our administrative team. Say more.
We also provide in our staff meetings at both buildings, we are very much part of the professional development exercise in, in what we do monthly. And I know that over at the middle school, they really have embodied the circle entity and they use that as a fundamental, correct?
Yep. We've done staff meetings that are revolve, revolves based on the circle really completely and in conversations. And it's now been the way that we open certain club meetings and unclub meetings and district committees as well. So it's seeping, it kind of is seeping its way slowly as the year goes on and we build trust within staff and students and we understand the process.
Did I see a kush in one of those?
Oh, yeah.
Because Mr. Bowles knows what the kush is because his daughter had to, I use that my question. Okay, now my comment, and I truly mean this. Academically, you know, we, we want to move up the ladder. There's no way. You know, there's no way we, as a school district, are going to move up until we do what you ladies are doing at the middle school. I am so pleased with this and with the leadership of Dan Bowles and his team that we have this in our district. We are, when you say we're leaders, we are leaders. We are the North Star. Because this program is so needy in the Mattydale community. And I know Roxboro comes up a little bit farther. I remember sitting here years ago and saying poverty was the key. You know, these kids go home and they don't have a full tummy of food and we've helped with that. And we've helped with clothing and we've helped with weekend snacks. So it's more than academics. It's the family and you ladies are amazing. I was a PCN Title I teacher and it's very difficult when you go home and you have to turn to your family because you've dealt with some difficult situations. Then I'm going to end up with a story. So I like to tell stories. So it was 2019. I was just elected to the school board and I think Dr. Melvin was the superintendent, it might have been Dr. Grammett, but all the new teachers were in this room. And there were two men that were training them and I stayed for the training. And one of the teachers was talking about basically what you're talking about. He said, and he worked at the junior high and he said, you know, I had my plan book out, you know, with all my, my information and this kid came up and just hit my coffee and went all over the plan. If you know anything about a plan book, board members, it's like your life. He never raised his voice. Am I right, Mr. Leahy? Never raised his voice, said, go get some paper towels and help me clean that up. And now he's assistant superintendent for our school district. That day I will never forget because I was a teacher and I don't know if I would have done, you know, but that's what it's all about. Thank you, ladies.
Any other questions? I'll just a comment. Thank you so much for this. This is needed more than ever today than, I mean, these students are very fortunate to have this program. Every time I listen to a presentation, read about this, these types of practices, I learn more myself. And they, they helped me become a better person and I'm able to then pass that on to others that I interact with. So I, I mean, this goes so much further than just the classroom in the building. This, and on the scale that we're doing this, this becomes a community-wide objective. And being the focal point, having schools be the focal point in our community and, and as much effort that you guys have put into this, I couldn't be prouder of where we are and what we're able to do here. So thank you all very much.
I had a quick question. So just to clarify, the, it doesn't have, we're sort of, restorative practices don't have to happen when something negative happens, right? It's also continue, ongoing, continuous when something positive going on. Can you just explain the difference between like, give an example, like how, like the therapy dogs or like the cereal boxes that were knocking each other over? Can you explain the difference between how that's a sort of practice between, and then the example you gave earlier with like the kid who vandalized the sign?
So the proactive stuff that we're doing is really trying to build the positive relationships and build the bridges between all of us as human beings within the building. Those are just those things that build our culture up within the buildings. In order for us to, if, you know, if kids have positive connections with staff and with each other, they're less likely to engage in negative behavior. We try to do, you know, shoot for 80% proactive versus the 20% reactive. That 20% is after that harm has been caused. We've done the proactive things. We've built those relationships, but something negative has happened. Then we use the restorative questions and circles in order to give the person who has been harmed a voice and a chance to speak and be heard. And the person who has caused the harm in order to hear that and also be able to repair that. So we're sort of practice, I mean, there's lots of circles and lots of questioning and all of that, but it's really based on building relationships proactively and then repairing harm if it does get caused. Did I miss?
Yeah. So, and so in those examples that you saw with the cereal box, I think it's, what was that? The domino effect? Yeah, Domino Day. So all the kids worked together to create that community. They all were, exactly, they were all able to lend to the community towards a common goal. So we're not only teaching those skills of kindness and humanity, empathy, but we're also laying the groundwork as to what that community looks like, what it looks like to wait for that to happen rather than be the joke, you know, the guy that might want to go out and touch it before it all doesn't, you know, ruin everybody's fun, you know? You're teaching those skills. As far as the therapy dogs, I'm the owner of the cute little Australian shepherd that you keep seeing. That's my Sydney and she's going to be 16 in a couple of weeks. Yeah, she's wonderful. And the relationship with that is a lot of times what you can do with the therapy dogs is students can then project those emotions that they're trying to seek for themselves. And they start to treat something that they don't necessarily have to be responsible for, but they're responsible for. And it helps them in a skill set growth and allows them to build those, again, communities norms happen. So when we bring Sydney into a room, when Cooper is brought into the room, the students learn a norm of expectations of behavior and how to interact and how to engage positively with somebody who they may or may not always get that immediate response. And so we, we divert that frustration, that immediacy of me now, me now. Where a lot of kids, I think in the, in the pandemic, that's where their frustration lied was that they couldn't get the result that they needed at that moment. And now they're learning again, a skill set on, on relationship building and community building as well.
Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you for your presentation. You should all be really proud of what you're doing, building, building better. My question is, when a situation comes to you, how does it come to you? Is there like a referral process? Is it, you know, from adult, from a child? How does it come to you?
All of the above.
Okay.
I know at Rox Mill, I work decently close with the counseling department. So we're kind of like an offshoot of them as well. The administration will say, this has come up. Who's available? Can you, can you step in here? And we kind of figure out who's going to tackle what, when. A lot of times I work with a counselor too and we'll sit in together depending on what has occurred. Sometimes it's a student who's coming out and saying, I'm having this issue. Can you please help me with it? This is who it's with. And then I'll conference with both sides before we'll hold a conference to talk about it. And then obviously it comes from administration and from teachers. I have referrals from them as well, like, you know, this keeps coming up. Can you come in and hold a circle on it? Or these two students continue to have conflict? Can you figure out a way to do that? So really I would say there's not one means, I mean, we have, we have a, our crosswalk where they can email us through that if they need help, but really it's just on the day-to-day, like this is what's popping up and what's needed.
Thank you.
To everybody involved, nice. Very, very nice. Thank you.
Okay, now I think we can all agree that the Roxboro campus is a great place to start. But does this practice scale up to say the junior high and hopefully the high school? And if so, how would you tailor some of these practices? Because I don't think they would translate one to one.
So thank you for that question. I think what we've learned so far is that this is not something you can foist on a building or a group of people. And what's been really nice is I know Gillette has taken some steps to get some training, sort of in an overview kind of sense. And there's been a tremendous amount of interest, both on the part of the junior high and the high school. I think, so one question I wanted the answer sort of shared with. So this particular student who did the damage on the playground, have there been any other incidents of vandalism? So no recidivism, if you will, in punitive language. So I think when we look at particularly secondary schools, I think there are age-appropriate strategies that are used, but the basic strategies can be used with adults. I think we're, we're really trying to get buy-in in terms of administrators are asking for this training. We're trying to build a cadre of restorative practice, turnkey trainers in the district so that we can grow our own, if you will, and expand that training through the district. But as was mentioned earlier, this isn't like you take one class and you're trained up and you're all done. This is a practice. This is every, everyone, every day. And, you know, when you think about how referrals come in, our family engagement specialists will have relationships with families. I was privileged to be part of a listening circle with several families at Rox Mill. That was really powerful. These were families who had concerns and had some real struggles with, with the school and with situations and to be able to come together. Jordan facilitated the circle. The principal and the associate principal were there. I was invited. It was powerful. And at the end of it, people were listened to and heard. And moving forward, things have started to change in terms of the relationship between those families and the school. And so this is not fast work, but this is great work. And as many of you have said, this is the right work. Because what, what other, what other choice do we have?
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. I've seen a lot of presentations, but I don't think I ever saw every single board member comment. So I think you could see Mr. Bowles pick up your prize for that tomorrow. Okay. Thank you very much. Hey, Mr. Keegan, you're going to, you're going to follow that act with quick update with some numbers for us on the budget. A state budget passed between our last board meeting and this one. So just a little more information.
Good evening. Oh, not that one. Sorry. It's my vision that's the problem. Sorry. I can't see what I'm doing. I need to enlarge this. No, I'm just trying to make it so I can share. Am I sharing already?
Yep, you're sharing.
Okay. Yeah, got it. Got it. Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. So as Paul said, we did receive final state aid numbers. And the purpose of this very brief presentation is just to update the board and the community as to where we stand with our state aid. So this chart compares all the components of our state aid listed on the, on the left. The first column is the approved budget. So that's the budget that the legislature and the governor agreed on last week. And the, the, the second column is the executive budget and that's what the governor had proposed. And that's the budget that's the basis for, that was included in our budget that was adopted by the board. So as you can see in areas like excess private and public cost aid, you know, some nominal differences, hardware and technology, software, library and textbook, again, some nominal differences. The only material difference is in our BOSI's aid. So the good news is we're going to get more BOSI's aid next year than we expected. The bad news is we spent a lot more money in BOSI's this year than we expected. So our thought process and our recommendation of the board is that we allow that money to be received next year and, and flow into fund balance. And what that'll do is that will, that will cover some of the costs associated with the other two referendums that we have on our ballot this year for the energy performance contract and the chillers at the junior high. The other thing I would point out here, just to be very clear, we talked about this once before, although there's no difference. Our building aid, if anybody did study the aid runs, you might notice that that's not the number that was on the aid runs. And the reason for that is that we've adjusted the building aid to reflect the aid associated with final cost reports that'll be filed before December 31st this year. So in doing so, we're going to get some additional aid. And so we wanted to just make sure that was included. So as I said, the changes are generally immaterial except for the BOSI's aid. We did have one other item of note. We were very hopeful that the capital outlay project limits would be increased from 100,000 to 250,000. Unfortunately, that limit was not increased. And so we're just recommending that our revenues be adjusted to basically lower the special project to $100,000 when we put all this in our wind cap system and increase our BOSI's number by $150,000. And that's, that's frankly, in, in reference to the fact that we have a track record of expanding. BOSI's provides some outstanding services. We're still in a, you know, responsive mode, trying to make sure we're meeting all the needs of our students and staff post-pandemic and, and we have a track record of adding BOSI services after the year started. The budget that the board adopted was what we knew about today without, without any capacity to add services. So the additional $150,000 will probably be absorbed in, in future courses that we sign up for. So that's the quick, quick update. Any questions or comments or concerns about that?
Oh, no questions. Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I got it marked up. So thank you though. Okay, comments from the audience? Last I knew, we had none. Okay, thank you, Joe. Board of Education Committee reports, I do know that Mary is not here tonight, but we have some policies to be, bring before the board. From my counting, there looks like there's 13 total and like 12, I saw we had five that were amended and re. I saw we had five that were amended and re-adopted and it looked like seven that were going to be re-adopted as. My math might be a little bit off. Mr. Crabtree.
All right, Legislative Committee met on April sixth and, uh, Mr. Keegan and Mr. Bowles went through the final budget. There were questions asked and Mr. Sterpy was present. But mainly we are talking about publicity and getting the vote out. We had a really good vote turnout in, uh, December. We want even better one coming up on May seventeenth. So Lori has been busy. I'm sure Dan, you know that. She's been very, very busy, Lori Cook. A lot of, um, concerts are coming up and a lot of sports. So, um, what Lori's going to do is she's going to write a little write-up and we're going to take it to the stadium and we're going to take it to the baseball field and announce at each game about the upcoming, uh, board election. And then also we will have flyers. Um, I know, um, Mr. Clary has done a really good flyer that, um, that Lori has and we'll be distributing that. And a big day, where most of you are going to be is April twenty-third, the Festival of Arts. And I know we'll have a lot of information. So the more we get out to the taxpayers and again, of course, the websites and all these things that Michael knows that I don't know about, with the computer. So our next meeting will be, um, May fourth. And I wanted to talk about one thing that came, uh, and it deals, I could have said during dance, is that we felt that the governor, and Jan Manion called me the other day about this. We thought the governor was going to approve the BOSI's, um, CTE, um, increase in salary. As you know, um, the state pays about thirty-five thousand and North Syracuse will pay the rest of the salary along with the other component school districts for our teachers. Remember, BOSI's does not have funds. It comes from the districts. That really disturbs me because Senator Manion said it was in the final, uh, presentation for the budget, but the governor did not include it. So we'll be working on that because, um, we want more kids to go to CTE and we can't if we don't, um, you know, thirty-five thousand, our starting salary here is way past, way past that. And it's been like this for twenty years. So, uh, that's one issue we'll be looking at, Paul.
Okay, thank you. And I rechecked my math so we can amend that. Seven plus five actually is twelve. And in science, sometimes the sum is greater than the whatever, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. That's what I'm trying to say, to weasel out of my mistake. Superintendent comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. Two things were happening last week. I attended the Junior High Honor Society, uh, Thursday before the break. What was special about it is it's the first time in two years that we were able to have a celebration in the auditorium. The parents, the students were absolutely exceptional. Things are still moving forward. Next week, three through eight math testing will start. So again, uh, those things are, are on the horizon. We had finished before the break, three through eight ELA. Um, I wanted to let the board know and you'll be seeing a presentation beginning of May. Um, the high school has started a human rights club. And so there'll be a presentation at the board meeting and I wanted the board to at least be able to, uh, have some information on that. But I think some good things are happening there. We have been awarded a twenty-first century grant. It's something that is not easy. Many districts try to apply. And we had one years ago with contact community services. But, uh, we were just told that this grant has been awarded to North Syracuse as well as other districts. And it's for, um, extended day activities. The program supports the creation of community learning centers that provide academic enrichment opportunities during the non-school hours or after-school hours. So, uh, there's going to be more to come on that. Apparently we've been also awarded best communities for music education awards. This went to seven hundred and thirty-eight school districts and eighty schools. So there's going to be something that will be coming out. I know it's going to be in the Weekly Star. Uh, Mrs. Cook will be putting that in. And I just wanted to say, it's first day back from break. The staff, students, excellent day. But, uh, tomorrow, uh, stay tuned. We'll see what happens tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments. Any here? Mr. Crabtree, did you have?
Of course. Couple of things. Um, I'm hoping that, you know, me, I want presentations. An update on the Carl W. Siley Elementary School, uh, renovation. We haven't had it in a couple of months. Uh, I know I drive by and things change by, by the day and they were out there working last week. Um, it was great. I have a favor to ask. I talked to the vice president about this and it's up to my fellow board members. One of our meetings will be June sixth, but that is the same night that OCMBOSI's will have its graduation of CTE at, um, the junior high. Uh, and believe me, there will be no parking places in this vicinity. The meeting starts at six, the graduation, sorry. So graduation will have approximately eighty to a hundred, uh, CNS students that will be graduating. Could we possibly move the meeting to seven o'clock? On June sixth, I know we like to do six, but that way, um, I could attend and anybody else. It's the first time in two years we've had this kind of graduation. This will be all the component school districts. So there's, um, about three hundred, four hundred kids will be graduating at our junior high. So I don't know how you people feel. I'm just asking you if we could change it to seven so that at least I could go over forty-five minutes. It's up to, it's up to you people.
I mean, I'm just, I'm fine with that. It would be something we could put on the next agenda and move it, second it and have a discussion, but if anybody wants to bring anything up about it now, we can do it that way.
And then last, um, you know, me and sports, went to a very, uh, game at Beville. It wasn't that great, but anyway, um, we've got some honors again. Uh, all CNY girls basketball team of large schools, Alexa Kulakowski and Alita Carrie Santangelo. And Alita Carrie Santangelo was chosen as one of the top four. And so she, she will be going on June twenty-third to the Everest Museum along with some of our soccer players. Can't remember who else. Um, and she's in the running to be the, uh, top girls basketball player in, uh, uh, County. And, uh, one of our boys made all CNY and I know Xavier knows Luke Paragon and no question about him being on that team. And finally, Rob Seichen, Seichen was coach of the year. That's the second one we've gotten this year's coach of the year. So that's a high honor too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consideration, routine action items, consideration, the approval of the minutes of the board meeting of April fourth, twenty twenty-two. If I get a motion. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I get a motion for items B, C, and D to place together. Motion Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. These are the classification and placement of disabled students in school, preschool and homeschool instruction. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Now, it's been a business office reports. If I get a motion to place E before us, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion of those reports? Seeing none, all in favor. Post that is carried. Okay, item A, the approval that a twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, out of courtland Madison, BOSI's administrative budget. If I get a motion to put that before us. Motion, Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Okay, that is before us. Some of us attended the budget presentation last week. Had a wonderful dinner with that. And the board has had this information placed before them. Are there any discussion or questions about that?
Just to state that you are just voting on the administrative budget, which is the nine million, three hundred thousand, five hundred and sixty-three. That's all that, that's every school district, component districts are voting at this time tonight. And then Jill will send the results to Teresa.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Right, B, a motion for the election out of Cortland Madison, BOSI's board members. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Marizio. Okay, that is before us. The slate was in your board docs. Our own Mr. Crabtree was one of the four. We're voting for up to four. We have four before us. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. All right.
Just want to thank each of you for your support. I, I feel that, um, BOSI's is, is where we're going with trades for a lot of our students. So thank you. I will continue giving you reports so that you know what's happening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion for C, please, to put the amendment of the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Dr. Kramer. This is the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. It is before us. It is the, we're simply, we have excess snow days and they'll adding a day to Memorial Day, I see. We're doing this on the eve of a nor'easter. But that's okay. It's moving east of us from what I understand. So now that I made my comments, anything else? Yeah, they will. All in favor? Pose that is carried. Thank you. Declaration non-marketable surplus. Motion, please, that before us. Motion, Mr. Herman, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Thank you. I'd like to take policies E through J together. Motion, put that before us. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. And as I said before, I think we had five that are amended. And recommended amended and re-adoption and tw- seven for re-adoption totaling twelve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Thank you. Couple retirements to acknowledge. Retirements of Deborah De Roma, account clerk two, retiring with seventeen point eight years of service. And Susan Pontillo, teaching assistant, retiring with nineteen point seven years of service. So I wish them luck and health in their retirement. And personnel report, A, a motion placed that before us. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. B, support staff personnel. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing it all in favor. Pose and that is carried. I would like to make a motion now to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of two individuals with no action to follow. If I get a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor. Pose that is carried and a motion, please, for adjournment. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing it all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned at seven oh three-ish. Thank you.